All right, today is December 2nd, Thursday. It is the Webster Planning Commission Day. Public hearing on the wetlands ordinance. That's how we're gonna talk about it. We're gonna have in -- let me say a few starting things and then we'll take attendance and whatever. But the purpose is to get input from the public. Because this is the third public hearing we've had on this matter. The reason we're having one more hearing is because there were some fairly major changes made in October in terms of format and some other issues. Otherwise, I wouldn't bother with this meeting. But anyway, we do have this meeting. The wetlands ordinance has gone through two years of review. Review by the Timberland Owners Association, Amy Manzali, a lawyer, looking at a whole kind of issue. So, I'm not inclined to make any changes in this ordinance tonight. We'll take questions, we'll take comments. But unless somebody can point out a major flaw by contradicting a state ordinance or contradicting one of our own ordinances or something that's really long, we're not gonna change this. So, what I'm intending is, at the end of this hearing, we will close, we will close the hearing and then vote on this. Assuming that's agreeable to everybody here on the board. At which point, it will go to the town, it will be put on the town warrant as an article from the planning commission. And everybody in town will have a chance to vote on it. Are there any questions about what the procedure is, what's gonna happen? Okay, so let's take attendance. We have --
Kathy Baker.
Marlo Herrick.
Adam Locke.
Craig Fornier.
Paula King.
Susan Youngs.
Okay. We have a quorum here. And so, I'm gonna open this up to comments from the public. Yes, would you stand and identify yourself, please?
My name is Dick George. Go ahead.
Okay, Dick.
Yeah. I have a question, first of all. Current use properties that are programmed or at least are not intended to be developed, how will this affect them?
It depends upon the location. Are they located close to wetlands? If it has to do with wetlands, it might be affected. I mean, it won't change condition use per -- condition, what do you call it? We would permit, so it won't change that.
Timber harvesting or anything like that.
Well, I guess my concern, if there is one, would be that it would somehow preempt things that are now legal under current use if we were to -- do we need to have, for instance, CUPs for normal current use activities?
The quick answer is no. This ordinance defers to the state ordinances in terms of timber harvesting. In other words, whatever the state says, that's what it is. We don't add anything to that in terms of timber harvesting. I don't know what your activities -- are you talking about anything that says timber harvesting?
I don't understand what you're saying. The mask doesn't help any.
Are you saying anything -- well, what's your concern? Is your concern timber harvesting?
No, my peripuse property is forestland. Forestland is allowed, as you wrote. But I just wanted to be sure that somehow there were some possible traps where we might have to get CUPs to do normal peripuse-type activities.
If you're talking about logging, the answer is no.
Well, whatever's allowed in forestland, so...
Clearing brush, that's also...
If you -- there's one item on here that says "normal activities incidental to residential use such as normal vegetation maintenance, mowing tree, removal of dead or diseased vegetation is allowed."
Yeah, that's, that's the way I would read it. I just don't know whether you foresaw or something that I did not.
Well, I don't think we -- I'm not willing to read anything into that more than what it says.
Okay. I have a second question.
Yes.
On your table on the floor here, any requests?
Yeah, go ahead.
Don't we all? Get mine out.
Can't read it without putting it... Okay. It says draining, dredging, draining, dredging, and filling, or changes in flow of water. I don't remember having seen changes in flow of water in this document. Would you address what you mean by changes in flow of water?
Isabel, you wanna answer that?
I'm sorry?
Would you care to address the question?
I would think that off the top of my head, that would mean it would want to change the direction of a fork or a creek, the way it was flowing naturally, change it in some way.
Does this apply to all changes in flow of water? Or is this just both the dredging of, draining and filling provision here? Remember now, you require BMPs of forestry operations. And one of the primary purposes of BMPs is to change the flow of water so that it doesn't wash out and create erosion problems. And I don't know exactly what change in flow of water means without the time.
Well, so, I think, what I think we're -- the intention here is to protect the water, okay? To protect the quality of water. Now, if you're gonna do a major dredge, fill, whatever, changing the direction of the water, what we would like is for you to come before the planning board and tell us what you're gonna do. That's not saying we're gonna say no or anything else, but...
If changes in flow of water only applies to the draining, dredging, and filling, fine. If it applies to anything and everything that can change the flow of water, then I would have problems.
Well, can you give us, give us an example of something?
Yeah, we need an example so that we can understand your concern.
Well, again, using BMPs, we have to plan for possible erosion. And one of the things we do is build our stewards and logging those oftentimes with little water barriers so that we divert the water.
Yep.
So that it doesn't wash things out and plume the downstream. So, that's a change in flow of water. You're engineered it so that somehow it wouldn't go naturally.
I don't think a water barrier is what we're talking about.
Well, it doesn't quantify it, it doesn't qualify it. It just says change in the flow of water.
But is this the sort of thing that is normal and allowed by the state for timber harvesting?
Yes.
Then it seems that the ordinance allows it.
Yeah, if you were gonna get a wetland to go upstream across and you're gonna have to fill out all the paperwork, you'd have to show them what you're doing. And you know, you know, you've gotta do that. And so, this would really pertain to what we're doing into the woods because you're already, you're getting a permit from the state. You know, your wetlands are gonna be sending you a permit. So, I think kinda what this is, this kinda is more or less is like for development is what, is that, that's how I take it.
I think I take it too.
As far as the logging part, you're gonna be all right as far as doing your best management practices, state laws. It's not gonna affect what we do. So, it will be, you know, you...
I don't like the wording, the way it's addressed. I think it needs to be somehow changed.
How do you wanna change it? What do you, you must have a pretty good idea of what you wanna, what you wanna say there.
Yeah, right.
So, let's hear it.
Okay.
Yeah?
And I would say draining, dredging, or filling, which changes the flow of water.
Which changes it, instead of or change the flow. You wanna, so you wanna switch that, take the or out, put, what do you wanna put in?
Which.
Which, okay. What do you guys think of that?
Well, let's, before we get into that, let's hear some more comments. I don't, I don't wanna, I don't want us to get into a back and forth.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's fine.
Are there any other comments?
Can we, with respect to this, down, under timber harvesting and forestry, you've got the notes one and two on the next page.
Right.
That, that talk about best management practices. I'm sorry. So, it seems to me that we're, it's covered there under that. You know, you know what I'm saying? We're talking about the permits that I was referring to.
Yeah.
Could we tie those together, one and two?
Well, that would be my take on this thing, too. We've already mentioned, you know...
We talked about the last, the last time, in a pretty good length, right?
Yeah.
Just what you're saying, that there's already laws and regulations on it.
That we gotta follow.
That you gotta follow and best management practices is a suggestion, I think, I think you'll, I'm not speaking for you. I think one of the concerns might be is, you just want people, you know, we may not be on this board two years from now, we don't know, right? You just want people to understand that logging and harvesting and that type of stuff to your property is not under, in a sense, these rules.
That's right.
It falls back to the state rules.
Right, that's exactly right. And I wanna point out, I wanna point out that both Marlo and Adam are in the timber harvesting business, they know this stuff backwards and forth and stuff.
Yeah, kind of, yeah.
They, despite their modesty, they know this stuff.
But that's maybe a good suggestion.
But that's what I, I mean, they can these, these, those top ones, I'm sorry, I printed this out last week, I hope it's the same order, that is not permitted, could they refer to except where covered by timber harvesting, forestry, whatever, which is kind of like really what you're talk, I've, to speak, you're talking about.
That would clarify it.
Yeah, yeah.
Agriculture should be thrown in that next to boot because you could have some issues with that sort of stuff also.
Well, that's number one.
Yeah, those are those notes.
Okay.
You could put the longer one on the next page.
Oh, yeah.
Go into detail, yeah.
Right at the top there.
Yeah, okay. It's all good.
So...
Yes, Isabel?
And speaking as a...
Speaking?
Oh, who? Wait. Speaking as a member of the Conservation Commission on that same usage chart, I'd just like to point out that the two items under the law that Dick George mentioned, the first one is activities which alter the natural drainage system, including onsite detention treatment of storm, stormwater runoff. And then the next one, construction of new streets, roads, and other accessways. The Conservation Commission is fine with needing a CUP for Level 2 district wetlands, but we feel strongly that under Level 1 district wetlands, the CUP should be changed to not permit it. And our rationale is that those wetlands are the most important, the ones we need to provide the most protection for in the town of Webster. So, the Conservation Commission would like the CUPs to be changed to NP.
Anybody wanna address that or should we just let it go?
Yeah, I don't agree.
No, that's, the thing of it is, sometimes you may have to, if you're gonna take like the construction of a new road or something like that, they're gonna have it engineered. You're gonna have, you know, you're gonna, for it to start, they're gonna have to come to us to see if they can even do it. But it's like, it's just like putting a driveway in off Call Road out to a house on Lake Winnapocket, you have to have an engineer to put the culvert. To do that and all that runoff from Call Road is going to Lake Winnapocket, just like the, over here on some of the other roads, your lake, you know, you, everything goes that way, but somebody might have a piece of land on the other side of the street that they're gonna build a house on, and all the runoff, it's going downward, it's gotta go somewhere. And it's not fair to them to take and not have a chance to have it engineered, to put a culvert in, to put the driveway in. So, that's why I say no way. They've gotta have, they've gotta have at least a shot. If you go not permitted, then that's not gonna happen, period. You gotta at least give them a chance.
Well, first off, we're talking about Level 1 wetlands.
Yeah, is Lake Winnapocket Level 1?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And you can't build in a Level 1 district, number one. Number two, there are, there is recourse for somebody who really feels that they need to put a route in, they can request, they can apply for a variance. But the point is with the Level 1 districts, it's, it's important in our view to provide as much protection as we possibly can for those wetlands. Which is not to say that the Level 2 wetlands aren't important also, but they're not as important as those Level 1s. So, that's why we're, we're looking to change the CUP to an NP.
So, what happens if you're going down Lake Road on the right-hand side of it, it's all wood, somebody wants to build a house there, and you got a culvert running under the road headed to Lake Winnapocket, what happens then? Or a brook? And there are brooks on, that come across, headed down through there, and if they had to cross that brook, even though that brook is running into Lake Winnapocket, what happens? If it's not permitted, they're shut down. If it's, you got an engineer that can design that, make it so it works, they should be able to do it.
It does, it does say though, under variance, "Relief for any requirements set forth in this ordinance shall be obtained only through application for a variance." So, there is a recourse for somebody who is in that situation and has no, no other choice.
But are they gonna get it? That's the, that's the thing, that's the thing is, the part that, are you gonna get it? Or is it just gonna say no, not permitted?
And it does, it does also say that there's a thing about, sometimes there's no other option. I'm trying to remember, I can't remember the exact spot for that, places where...
Could I speak to that for a moment? My name's Susan Ross, and I used to be on the planning board, and I worked on this ordinance. And what Susan's trying to talk about is waivers, which is, it's a little bit further in the ordinance. But for this ordinance, and also for all of the planning board regulations, the planning board may waive requirements of the application if it's gonna cause undue hardship to the owner and also if the conditions of land, the waiver that is issued is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. So, there is a recourse. And in your, in your example, if a citizen comes to town, wants to put a house, and in order to develop their land properly, they would come to the building department, and they would go through that process, and also at that time, they would be, we'd give them these regulations, this ordinance, and they would have to work with their, with their developer to come up with a plan that works. Now, if they couldn't, and they already bought the land, and they felt that was a hardship, they could, they would have a theory under this to come to the planning board, or as Isabel said, can also go to the zoning board of adjustment for a variance. So, there are options here, and we just feel pretty strongly that it would be best if it wasn't permitted, that somebody could, could construct a new street or road in the most important, you know, areas of the proposal. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any more comments? Yes, and would you stand and identify yourself, please?
Hi, good evening. Chris Hodge, then Lake Road. So, my comment, first of all, I think it's to, just thank the planning board for making amendments to the way they approach the treatment of small properties. I raised this issue at the working group, and this November 18 document, I think, does address some of those issues. But I did wanna comment on this question of waivers and variances. And I think that there is some confusion in the document about what is intended. So, if you look at section four, it says pretty clearly, the planning board shall not issue any CUPs for a 100-foot buffer within the Level 1 district for new construction. And in theory, Mr. Locke's example probably doesn't apply because the draft ordinance also says that if you're on the other side of a certain class of roads, buffers don't apply. But the, you know, the, what it does raise a question about the extent to which the planning board or the zoning board has the type of optionality that we're discussing here, whether or not they can issue waivers or not. Now, the section of the draft ordinance which refers to the waiver is part D of Roman 8, it's on page eight. And this was one of the comments I intended to make tonight, and that comment is that I think it's unclear whether the waiver that the planning board can raise is relative to the requirements of an application or relative to the requirements of the actual permit. Because it says, the planning board may waive any requirements of the CUP application. And the requirements in an application included in Roman 7, part A, there's a whole list of things that are, have to be part of an application before the board considers it. So, I think, I think it's unclear whether this waiver provision applies to what constitutes a valid application, or whether you can actually waive the requirements that are articulated in the ordinance for the actual permit. And so, that is a, framing, maybe I should frame it as a question. I don't, I'm not sure that it's clear which case applies. I think the intention is to allow the planning board to waive the requirements of a permit, and maybe also what's required to introduce a, or seek an application, but it's not clear. And then, lastly, a comment, or a question I have is in the context of what the words "expansion" means in Roman 6, number 2, which is talking about non-conforming uses. So, this talks about what you can and can't do with legal non-conforming uses. And it says that "a legal non-conforming use shall not be expanded, and in the event of any change or expansion, such non-conforming use will be deemed to have been abandoned." So, in the context of a non-conforming structure, the idea of expansion is, you know, I think pretty clear. But in the context of how you're using property, I don't really, I guess I'm wondering what expansion means. Does it mean a more intensive use? So, for instance, you know, if the use is residential, seasonally, and you wanna start to use it 12 months a year, is that an expansion of a use? It's not a change, per se.
I, I may be correct. I think we're talking about building, expansion of building. In other words, you can't expand it toward the lake. You have to expand it. Because you're within, you're 50 feet from the lake, you can't go into that, you'd have to expand up to the side.
So, I would agree that that's what part B of Roman 6 talks about, because it talks about the structure. But then, part, actually, it's not legal, but the first part of Roman 6 is talking about use. So...
That's how, that's how I would have read it as well.
It's saying that you can't expand your structure if you're in the buffer, which makes perfect sense. But then, the term "expansion" is used in the context of use. How about use?
Use also means roads, too, right? Sue, you wanna help us here?
One idea is that this was referred, the use could be, say you're using your property along the lake at the beach. So, that would be, what you're doing now can, can remain, is a legal non-conforming use now, where the ordinance has passed. But if you were gonna expand it, there would be consideration for that. More about how you sell your property, like if it was agricultural, or a garden, or...
So, you, you could not expand a garden in a 100-foot buffer? That's the type of use that would be no longer permitted? Or...
I would say it would be a garden.
Well, here's, here's a lot, it's a less than two acres. So, it falls under that category where you're talking about a 50-foot buffer, even though, even though it's on Lake Winnapocket, which is a Level 1 body of water. But yeah, I think change of views might mean a garden, it might mean a beach.
But gardens are allowed, they were saying. Gardens not an issue.
Right.
It's, it's...
But the beach, you'd have to get permits.
To get a bigger beach.
Right.
And if you've already got a beach, it doesn't.
Right, right.
You're fine.
That's it, yeah.
So, it wouldn't, it wouldn't apply in a situation where you want to have the same type of use, use as residential property, but you just wanna use it more frequently in the course of the year?
That would be fine. I can't see an issue with that.
Yeah.
Who decides that?
That was, yeah.
That's, that's, that's to me, the...
As far as the town concerned, it doesn't matter.
It's a residence, whether you're there one month or 12 months, it's a residence, and you're not changing the use. It's used as a residence.
Okay.
So, it's not, it, yeah.
Right. So, it's not really the how intensive the use is.
Right.
It's the physical footprint of a use.
Physical footprint, right.
All right. So, do you wanna use the...
No.
Okay. So, I guess, really, I think, like, my only question then relates to just this question of the waivers. And I, I, you know, I think it's quite clear that the planning board does not have the flexibility to issue, let's see if my readers on, CUPs in 100-foot buffer for new construction in Level 1. And then, any use in section four, either not permitted or permitted with a CUP is prohibited. So, just, I think, I think there is a bit of an internal conflict there between what the waiver language is saying about how much flexibility the ZDA has, the planning board has, and then other parts of the draft ordinance which says, which is more sort of prescriptive in its approach. So, I'm not really providing comment on how to resolve it. It sounds like the intent is to give the zoning board or the planning board a lot of flexibility. So, I, I guess I would just urge that you take a close look at that and make sure that that's what's gonna happen, that this is an option.
Yes, Sue?
I think I might know why it says that. If you go back to the uses on, I think we're talking uses, you go, you start at the top and the first one, two... You start at the top, and the first one, two, three, four, five things are not permitted. And as Isabel said, the next two, which the Conservation Commission had originally asked that those next two things would not be permitted. And those are related to construction and actual, something that all sorts of drainage. So they're related to construction. So that statement was in there because we did not want a CUP in level-one for new construction. So there is an inconsistency now because the planning board changed that to be a CUP, and that would not be in contention. So if you're going to keep those two things as permitted with a conditional use permitted, then you would strike that phrase that gentlemen.
You're talking about page eight under waivers?
No, I'm talking about.
Oh, these two, yeah.
The activities of the natural drainage, construction.
Yeah, the one that is.
I thought they were talking about waivers.
So on the next page, right above it, the variance section, this gentleman is saying the planning board shall not issue any CUPs for 100-foot buffers in level-one for new construction. And that was in there because it related to the first two things under the uses page, I mean, the chart.
So, so we should just get rid of that?
Right. If you're going to keep this CUP for the two.
All right, so the last.
So the last sentence there, the planning board should not issue it. So pick that up and read it, there's this.
Thank you.
I was thinking about this as she was speaking. I think that a, when you make that change, just to make it clear under D and Roman eight, that the planning board has the authority to waive requirements of both what's required to seek, to produce an application and also permit. Right? So you, it may be the case that I, someone would come to you and say, the cost of producing a third-party engineering study is onerous. That's a requirement of a completed application. That's not actually a requirement of a permit. So I think what I'm suggesting is that to give yourself the most flexibility, you should grant yourself the right, the ability to waive both requirements for the application and then whatever the permit may be.
Well, under waivers, as you correctly pointed out, it says, the language says, which is what I'm talking about, the planning board may waive any requirements of the CUP application. We're talking about the application.
Right. Right, that's correct. Which is in Roman seven A, right, application inspection studies. So someone may come to you with good cause and say, it's unreasonable or unnecessary for me to do number three. Or rather, number four, third-party investigations. But at the same time, you've got a number of other regulatory requirements around the actual permits that I don't think D would give you the flexibility to waive. You may want that.
So I'm not. Do you have a suggestion here?
Yeah, I would just suggest that, again, that first sentence.
Uh, which page?
Uh, it's page eight. D waivers, the planning board may waive any requirements of an A CUP application or requirements of the permit. That would give you flexibility over both the process and results.
Does anybody have any comments on that? Good, go ahead.
So are you okay with that? Are you guys okay with that?
Yeah, so we're gonna change that?
Yeah, we're gonna change the word, CUP, under waivers. Planning board may waive any requirement of the CUP application or the.
And?
And.
And or.
I believe that should be on a case-by-case basis.
Yes.
But be consistent.
Yeah.
I mean, that's why there's a whole list of, a whole list of things that you have to do.
Any other comments?
Oh, sorry, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for your careful reading of this. I know it's not, it's not, it's not sort of a leisure reading. Do we have any other comments? If not, we're gonna, we're going to close the public hearing. All right? Public hearing is not closed. And the next question is, would the committee like to vote?
You making any change to this thing or not?
Well, I'd like, what I'd like is a motion. Say, we'll accept this with the finality. I mean, naming the changes. Daddy's got the good changes there.
What's that?
You've got the, you've got the nice changes. Why don't you make a motion?
Okay, so I make a motion that we leave it as, we change in the waivers, the D, the waivers part after the application and/or permit. You know, basically, put that in the back part.
Okay.
Okay? And then drain and dredge and fill in, which changes the flow of water. And leave that the way it is. And then as far as these other two, we should give them the right to, as far as the continued, you know, use permits, just leave it as we got it.
Okay.
That's what I say.
And then there's one other change, I think.
I didn't see that one.
We took out a sentence, wasn't we?
We took out a sentence out of page.
Under, under the, I don't.
Oh, yeah, planning board.
Planning board.
Yeah, scrap it.
Okay. Does everybody, everybody understand the motion? Yes? Are we ready to vote?
Second.
Sorry, second. Are we ready to vote? Everybody in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
So it's unanimous. So now the next step, this will go before the citizens of Webster in February, March, when we have the board articles.
March.
Thank you all. We're adjourned. Oh. Who wants to adjourn?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
I second it.
Second.
I'm in favor.
Aye. Aye. So now we.
Oh, we're.
So now our next meeting is on the, what, the 17th?
Seventeenth, a regular meeting, yes.
Up to December.
Up to December.
Just trying to.
And for once, we won't be dealing with.